...a public hearing on Wednesday on the proposed changes to the ED 306 rules. I printed them for you. I will plan on being there to give public comment to the state board. There seems to be an overall reduction in the total amount of elements included in the minimum standards. And one of the concerns that I have is, given the ongoing lawsuits around school funding in New Hampshire, let's remember what the fundamental tenet of the CONVAL lawsuit was. CONVAL took the minimum standards and then assigned a cost to them. So now we see what appear to be a reduction in the minimum standards. I'd like to think it's not to lower what the state board believes the exposure to the state of New Hampshire is, but boy, it sure feels like that could be a possibility to make. So I'm going to give public comment on a few things. The second piece is, we received technical advisories from the New Hampshire Education Department. We receive sometimes dozens of them over a couple of years. We received one on March 27th that caught us by surprise, and it's requiring that every school must make a meal available to every student who attends. So let's talk about kindergarten. We don't feed our kindergarten children. We don't have a kitchen. We don't have a cafeteria. And according to this new technical advisory, we are being required to provide a meal to our kindergarten students during their two-and-a-half-hour program. So there is the ability to ask for an opt-out, which has to go to the Commissioner of Education, but I wanted to let you know that we are anticipating this being a massive challenge for us. And you can't even do like a grab-and-go. Like, for example, if we knew we had students that wanted to take a bag or something like that, we could offer that. It's not enough. So that's included in there. We included a letter that discusses the difference in...
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When I read that, it also said it could be either breakfast or lunch, but it has to be taken during school hours, which means those two-and-a-half shorten up. What's the accommodation rate? Would you feel 20 minutes, half an hour?
So we typically do around 20 minutes, 22 minutes in other schools. So that's about the amount of time it would be.
That would be about 20, 18% of class time.
Yeah.
And to give lunch to small children in 18 minutes is gonna be like trick.
We're talking about the four-year-olds and the three-and-a-half?
Threes, fours, and kindergartners. So feeding a three-year-old in 20 minutes?
Yeah.
Oof.
A lot of them special ed kids. It's crazy.
Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge. Do we need anything to, from this board, to direct you to request the waiver? Or is that coming up on the agenda?
No. So we haven't kind of gotten, I wanted to talk to the Commissioner a little bit and find out what the expectation is around the waiver. So they do say, a school board of any school may make an application for a waiver. So I think, once we get to the point, we'll have it as an agenda item. We'll plan to discuss it. I would want to have Mrs. Bizarro here. I would likely have Mrs. Stoyl be here. So we'll plan to talk about, and they don't have a timeline that says, you know, you have to request the waiver by a certain date. So I think at this point, Scott, my recommendation would be to pursue the waiver, but once we get there, it will have to be an action of the board. So more to come on that. The next piece in the folder is, this is a publication that comes out of the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and it really looks at the differences between contracted employees and employees. So of particular interest for the board would be our discussion a little later tonight around the VCBA, which is the Board Certified Behavioral Analyst position. This is Jermaine to this conversation. We have a copy of our online curriculum newsletter that Mrs. Lamson does, and does an incredible job. And then the last piece that I have in the correspondence folder, if you can take a look at this, this is the new required facility maintenance plan. Mr. Loring, our great facilities director, is here this evening. But this plan was just released by the New Hampshire Education Department, and it's a whole new process of 105 pages that we need to go through and get ready and have spreadsheet after table after spreadsheet after table of all this information that we provide to the New Hampshire Education Department when they come and do facilities reviews. So despite the presumed movement away from regulation in the ED 306 reductions, there seems to be an increase in regulatory oversight in all other areas. And that's the correspondence folder.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Can Heather fly in?
I'll be here all week.
On that, Brian?
Yes.
Would the contemplated changes to the ED 308?
306.
306, modify those regs so that they would be, that paperwork so it would be reduced because it won't be in there anymore?
I don't believe so. They just released the, Scott, do you have some info on that?
Yeah, I do. So we talked about this in A&amp;F, but now is a good time. So ED Rule 306.09 currently states the following, which is being omitted, okay? So it's currently in there, and it's being omitted with this draft, with this revision. A, "The local school board shall provide for each school such custodial services as are necessary to ensure a clean, sanitary, and safe physical plant and grounds. The school plant shall be cleaned on a daily basis when school is in session. School repairs and maintenance shall be performed on a regular basis." So that's required now. It won't be in the future, so you don't have to have a clean school. B, all school...
Well, what's interesting, Scott, is the rules may not require us to have a clean school, but this process...
Yeah, I don't know.
...still remains.
Then it says...
So they're reducing the expectations in the minimum standards, but then giving us a 105-page advisory document when they come and do the facilities oversight.
Yeah, there's two other ones that are kind of profound here. B, again, currently in the ED rules, currently required, "All school staff, including custodians, maintenance workers, food service workers, educators, support staff, and administrators shall receive training on their roles in maintaining clean, healthy school facilities and the importance of quality indoor air." So that's indoor, quality indoor air, and the training for such also not required. And lastly, C, "Schools shall minimize the use of toxic chemicals for cleaning and pest control. Staff shall not be permitted to bring cleaning products or pesticides into a school without approval from the school administration." So that was in there, it's in there currently, but now you could presumably bring whatever chemicals or cleaning supplies that you wanted. So it's a, and there's a whole host of other things. That's why you should, people should read this, because there are things that stayed in here, just even on education, that whether it be parent-teacher conferences, progress report, it's all saying that's no longer required.
Is there somewhere the public can access this document?
Yeah, I think the document is published on the New Hampshire Education Department's website. If you were to Google "New Hampshire Education Department ED 306 rules," and the process is open for rulemaking, and the first hearing is this Wednesday. So if people are interested, they can provide testimony to that effect.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, accommodations, good news. Wendy?
Sure. So I'm happy to report out for Lil this evening to start. Over at Goffstown High School, Student Council is hosting their annual canned food drive through April 12th. One can or $1 equals one point for their class. Most-wanted items equals two points for their class, and the winning grade gets a class movie event. So they're really excited about that. In Unified Sports Action, our Unified Sports team participated in a field day over at Pinkerton Academy, and we took home first place. So congratulations to our amazing Unified Arts team. New Hampshire Allstate Festival is this weekend in Concord. 16 students from Goffstown High School will be attending this year, and senior Lil Hazelbaker will be receiving a four-year award at that event. National Honor Society is preparing for their roadside cleanup. Every year, NHS facilitates this cleanup by having all clubs sign up for a time in a place to pick up trash off the side of the road. With the help of the town, this event has been super successful, and in the past, they were excited to always be a part of it, which is great. And then Ro Kappa National Honor Society for Social Studies is accepting applications at this time, so if any students would like more information, they should see Mr. Pischka. In other news, over at Glen Lake, the Glen Lake Parent Group will be hosting a bike safety rodeo at Glen Lake on the morning of Saturday, April 13th. And they'll also be hosting a family fun night this Thursday night for families to come and enjoy literacy instead of activities. Over at Bartlett, they had an all-school meeting on the 28th of March, and the PBIS team rolled out this month's focus, which is lining up quickly and quietly at recess. Students love earning praise and stickers, and they're talking about the importance of lines to get in quickly for transitions to get back to learning. They also announced the March Hedgehogs of the Month. Staff gets to choose a student that consistently models the hedgehog habits of safety, respect, and responsibility. Winners receive a special pencil, a certificate, and get to invite two friends to a special luncheon celebration. And then a big thank you to the Sanees volunteers who come over and help out at Bartlett during class, lunch, and recess. The Bartlett students love having them there, so a big shout out to Sanees. Over at Maple Ave, last week, the 4th grade visited the State House and the New Hampshire Historical Society. And this week, the 1st graders will be going to the McAuliffe Shepherd Discovery Center. And there's a lot more field trips planned for April and for May. Also, the parent group held a penny war competition between the 24 classes, and they raised over $6,000 at Maple Avenue. And Maple Ave would also like to thank their PFT. They were the ones who were able to secure the solar eclipse glasses for all of the Maple Ave students. You'll be hearing more about the eclipse when Mr. Bulkey does his report out later. And then on Saturday, April 13th, the PFT will be hosting the annual Little Miss Dance at Mountain View. It's a luau theme this year, and each student may invite one special adult to attend with them. Over at Mountain View, Grade 7 science classes are finishing up a frog dissection unit. Students have been incredibly engaged in this. I was actually there last Friday and was able to see a beetle that they found in one of the frog's stomachs, which is a rare find. They were very excited about it. I was not as excited as they were to see it, but they were very excited. And our PAWS Pride Assembly was also held on Friday. Students and staff had a great time celebrating trimester-two accomplishments. They celebrated principals' honor roll, honor roll, sports teams, and they also did some team-building games. So we have lots of good news.
Yeah, wow. Thank you, Wendy. Go ahead.
So I have one more to piggyback on Mrs. Kohler. So the high school received notification that one of our great science teachers is being recognized. The National Science Teaching Association has announced it's presenting its 2023 Robert E. Jaeger Exemplary Teaching Award to Goffstown High School lead teacher, Jamie Gratton. This award recognizes six full-time K-12 science educators across the country who successfully use integration of innovation and excellence in their classroom. And so we're so happy for Jamie and want to extend our congratulations to her.
Yeah, that's great. Anything else?
Well, that's it for this.
That's it. Okay. All right, go ahead, Jared.
Just to piggyback off of what Wendy had said for the PFT at Maple, they also donated, the PFT donated 28 digital cameras and SD cards to the school so that parents and not only, I'm sorry, not only teachers, but Unified Arts could take pictures of those students that did sign up, so that parents could see their kids in activity. So I thought that that was pretty cool as well.
That's nice. Thank you, Jared. Anyone else? Go ahead, Shane.
It is National Assistant Principal Appreciation Week, so I wanted to send a warm thank you out to all of our assistant principals in the district, as a handful of you guys. So thank you for all you do, day in and day out.
Thank you, Shane. Anyone else? Go ahead, Jenny.
This is kind of crazy, but I'm going to send out an accommodation to a kindergarten teacher for the best April Fool joke today. I know that the teachers aren't supposed to give out goodies on a holiday, so she announced that everyone was going to get a brownie today, and everybody got a brown lowercase e.
That's cute.
I don't know that I would think that was cute if I were one of the ones expecting said brownie. I think I would be horribly disappointed.
Actually, they were excited because it was a joke that they got. It's cute.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? All right, moving on to public comment. Is there a public comment tonight? Hi, Nancy, welcome.
Hi. First, I apologize for my voice, but actually, you can hear me. I had lost it earlier, so we'll see how long it lasts. Nancy Beederman, Byam Road, New Boston. Just going to repeat, because I saw on the agenda, which wasn't posted till today, that we were going to see Wendy's part of her presentation, which, again, was very well-thought-out and detailed. Just want to refresh everyone's memory about some of the concerns I had. First, to let you know and remember that YA books are written for 12- to 18-year-olds. That is a huge age range of maturity. The term YA was first used regularly in the 1960s in the United States. Actually, in my teaching classes in college, I actually took a young adult literature class because I was a reading concentrate. So it was interesting, the books that were used back then and the books that are used now. The YA category includes most of the genres found in adult fiction and nonfiction with the themes that include friendship, sexuality, drugs and alcohol, and sexual identity. I don't think most parents know that. Second, both the New Boston and the Goffstown Public Library separate their YA fiction section from the children and adult sections. The nonfiction YA books are in the adult section but are labeled YA. One of the reasons that Wendy did this wonderful presentation is that we had parents that wanted the YA books separated at the Mountain View Middle School Library and for them to be separate from the regular books. Third, the two most popular types of books that she'll tell you that are in the Mountain View Library are the graphic novels and the manga, Japanese anime, which is comic strips. Graphic novels and mangas are stories that are presented in comic book, comic strip format and published as a book. It was stated that the majority of the books in the YA are nonfiction, and just to let you know, the Library of Congress labels graphic novels and manga as nonfiction. Next, the permission slip to opt students into YA books should be extended to 7th and 8th graders, and especially to the New Boston parents. Parents should be made aware of the materials that are available at the Mountain View Library and its own permission slip to access YA books. Mountain View Library states that YA books are generally written for high-school-aged readers and contain mature themes. Lastly, Wendy recommended looking at the IGL policy on challenging books, since it hasn't been looked at in a number of years, I think 2000, if my memory serves. There are deadlines by the initial committee that looks at any books that are being challenged, but there's no deadline when it gets to the superintendent. And the reason I know this is because I'm currently challenging three books at the Goffstown High School Library, and so now I am in a waiting period because that policy does not stipulate any deadline as to when the superintendent has to get back to me, which, as a parent and someone that's waiting and already has waited 30 working days to hear from the committee, we're now in a holding pattern. So I would expect that that part of the policy should probably be looked at, too.
Nancy, we're at three minutes now.
And I'm all done.
Perfect.
I'm getting better.
You are. Thank you so much. Can you email or give that to Denise for the minutes, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I scum some of you? No? Okay. Sorry.
Hi, welcome. State your name.
Mary Jenkins, 245 Wallace Road. I just want to give a little love letter to libraries, to our school libraries in advance of next week. April 8th is Right to Read Day. Want to just say how much I value the role of the professionals who work with kids in our schools, day in and day out, who manage collections, who provide programming, who support our students in so many ways. So a shout out to our school media specialists, to our librarians and educators who work with students around use of library materials. I want to point out that both school and public libraries have seen a tremendous increase in the number of challenges over the past year. There have been challenges to over 4,200 unique titles at libraries over the past year, and a tremendous increase in school, in public libraries specifically, but the number I just stated is almost a doubling of the number of challenges over the past year. A huge increase. I also want to point out that nearly half of the titles that have been challenged are either by or about people of color and/or LGBTQIA people, and I think that's tremendously concerning about the types of materials that have been challenged. And I just want to bring that to your attention in the midst of celebrating the right to read and the importance of access to information by children in our schools. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for public comment? Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sean Santino, 96 Patty Hill. I was unfortunately traveling at the last school board meeting, so I wanted to step up today. I watched and heard some of the comments from public comment, and there was a lot of praise and recognition to the standards that MVMS already has for, in our media center. And I wanted to make sure that I made it tonight to see Mrs. Kohler's presentation because the hard work that our media specialists in the libraries put in definitely impacts the children and the education that they get. So I just wanted to provide a little shout-out, good news comment. Thank you for the hard work that they do put in and the hard work you put in on this presentation, Mrs. Kohler.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Anyone else for public comment? No? All right, then I'm going to close public comment. So now we're going to move on to the middle school library presentation. Wendy?
Thank you. So I'm a little stressed now that I got a little bit of praise before I start this, so...
You'll do fine.
For those at home, I do want to let people know that I have condensed a rather lengthy presentation into a much shorter time span for our meeting today. I did provide all the board members the at-length program so that you could see everything. One of the things that Mr. Bulkey had tasked me with as part of the memo that he sent out in the late fall was to look at best library practices at the middle school level, to get some data involving our current library usage, before and after school, classes going to the library, the amount of books that are being taken out, and then to specifically talk about YA materials, not only in our school, but to get some data from some accompanying surrounding schools as well, so that the board would have a little bit of information on what's going on outside of Goffstown. So I'm going to attempt, like I said, to do this in a shorter amount of time. So first of all, for best practices in middle school library, it's important for you to know that there is no specific research just on best practices that have to do with middle school. When you're looking at best practices, it's best practices in school libraries. So for anybody who's looking to do a doctoral project, I highly recommend maybe looking specific at middle schools, because right now, you can't find information that's specific to that. However, tonight, rather than going into great detail that I did at CNE, I want to talk about some of those foundational elements that are a part of a strong library and talk about how we're meeting those at Mountain View right now. So when you're looking at the shared foundation, I do have it up for families to be able to view at home, and I'm looking at the PowerPoint presentation, which is in one of your packets that you have in front of you. Those shared foundations that are from the Library Association involve inquire, include, collaborate, curate, explore, and engage. And as I mentioned, rather than going into great detail, I'm going to talk a little bit about what each one means that you can currently see in practice at Mountain View. So when we're talking about inquire, inquire is building new knowledge by inquiring, thinking critically, identifying problems, and developing strategies for problem-solving. In our Library Media Center at Mountain View, we do a number of co-teaching experiences where classes will come into the Library Media Center, and our Library Media Specialist will co-teach with the content area teacher. So she'll talk about best practices in the research process. She'll curate books and put them in one area for students so that they're able to easily access books. As an example, this past month, we had a 7th grade team who did an enormous project on maple sugaring. So she was able to, first of all, know ahead of time that that project was coming up. She ordered some additional books to get some new materials for students, because that was a new project that they started this year, and organized all those materials. So when the students came in, she was able to talk about best research practices and have everything ready to go for the students. She also organizes a research hub online, so students are able to access that through Schoology in order to find research materials to work through that inquiry process. For include, include is offering learners the opportunity to navigate various interests and perspectives in their learning community. And when we look at include, our Library Media Center has displays that are changing regularly. They'll take out different topics, celebrations, different interests for students, and a lot of times, you'll see it changing when holidays are coming up, different seasons, they'll put different materials out for students to be able to see. Students and staff also have the opportunity to request titles to be added to the collection. I just mentioned that maple sugaring project. Again, that was one that we've never done before, so we needed to get some additional materials. So teachers were able to say, hey, we're really looking to do this project. Can you get more resources for our students? And then diversifying our collection to be inclusive for all readers and abilities. We have a number of books in our library that are picture books. We have a number of students who are reading below grade level, and some of our students with significant special needs access the library, and we want to make sure that we have books for their level to make sure that they have resources as well. We also have a vast professional library for our staff, so they're able to go in and get books to be able to help their teaching practices as well. They also have special events and programs that they offer, so different things like Poetry Month, World Read-A-Loud Day. Right now, they're doing a March Madness tournament that coincides with the NCAA tournament. So they're doing a lot of fun activities to get students interested. Don't forget, through the library, we want students to love reading. We want to provide them access to books that will make them lifelong readers. So in order to get that done, we do a lot of different marketing in order to get students and staff into our library media space. They also do different reading challenges throughout the year, scary story contests and a couple of others as well. Collaborate, excuse me, work effectively with others to broaden perspectives and work towards a common goal. So we have created in our Library Media Center a teacher workspace for teachers to be able to meet during their professional learning community time, which happens during the school day, or before or after school hours for curriculum meetings. We also have after-school library hours for our students to be able to meet for group projects. They can play chess, they can work on puzzles, they can use Makerspace, and clearly, they can take out books during that time as well. In a little bit, I'm going to show you some statistics about the amount of students that we have coming into the Library Media Center, both before and after school. Classes are constantly booking the space to use their resources, like I had just mentioned with that maple sugaring project. And then obviously, students will utilize spaces to work independently, to work in small groups. Sometimes students need to get some work done outside of a typical classroom setting, so sometimes a special ed teacher or an interventionist will take students out to work in the Library Media Center as well. Curate. Make meaning for oneself and others by collecting, organizing, and sharing resources of personal relevance. So again, going back to the marketing, when you walk into the Mountain View Library and Media Center, everything is labeled... Library Media Center, everything is labeled. It's colorful. You can tell where the fiction section is, where the nonfiction is. All of the fiction is in categories and it's color-coded and labeled on all of our books. So it creates an attractive place for students to go to be able to find books that they're interested in. We also share resources and newsletters. There is an Instagram account that's specific for the library media center on our website and on Schoology as well for parents and for students to be able to access. We also generifying the fiction and biography sections. So again, when we're looking at that, it's organized, all the fiction, adventures together, classics are together, fantasies together, so that students who are interested in a particular type or style of writing are able to find it easily. All of them are organized with signage. All of the spines of the books are labeled and everything is color-coded. We also, as I mentioned earlier, have a special collection to make our library inclusive. We have picture books, we have professional sections for our staff. We also have bins of books that have four to six copies of the same book. Quite often, our literacy class, which is built for our seventh and eighth graders who are not reading and writing on grade level, that is a really small class of no more than 10 students. So sometimes, those classes will go up into the library media center and they'll break up into two groups and they'll talk about different books that they like to do in small group for reading as well. High-interest topics in book series are added throughout. And again, a lot of that is based on student recommendations of what they're looking for. And then we're rapidly growing our graphic novel and our manga section, which is our highest circulated genres right now. And as was mentioned in public comment, manga is Japanese comics. We also have dynamic shelving in the nonfiction section. And if you haven't been to the Mountain View library, it's actually one of my favorite spots in the library with the way that it's set up. It's organized by subjects. So when you go into the history section, it will be labeled where there's information on the Civil War, on World War I, on different parts of history. And some of the books are front-facing so that the titles really stick out for students. We also have our picture books there or some of our lower-level reading books in there as well as other books from that genre that students should be interested in. And again, we're labeling all of those. We have labels on all the spines of all of our books for the students to be able to see as well. Explore. Discover and innovate in a growth mindset through experience and reflection. At Mountain View, we do have a Makerspace section of the library, which predominantly is based on STEM activities, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Also, some STEAM activities too, which adds arts into that. They host events like the Hour of Code. And they also have provided a digital Makerspace through Schoology for students who maybe don't have access during the day or after school to go into the information center where they're able to get activities. And what's great is, a lot of these activities are consumable. So students can go in and they can create things and they can take it home with them. And there's books and resources that go with those materials for students to be able to get more information on as they're working on those activities. Engage. Demonstrate safe, legal, and ethical creating and sharing of knowledge products. So we are consistently talking about what good digital citizenship means throughout the years when students are at Mountain View. They teach mini lessons like evaluating websites, using databases for vetted information. So whenever students are doing projects, that is consistently being discussed, not only by their classroom teacher, but all of those that work in the library media center as well. We do activities that celebrate Digital Citizenship Week. And obviously, we provide information to our staff members to make sure that they are keeping up with trends and things like that in the classroom when it comes to this as well. And because this is a library media presentation, I do have some work cited. I think I would have been in a little bit of trouble if I wouldn't have done that. So, I'm actually going to pause on this. And I'm actually going to move to the second packet that you have, which has the memo from Mr. Balki just as a reminder of the things that he had asked me to look at before I make recommendations. So, in moving into the next phase of the presentation, I want to give you a little bit of statistics of our library media center, which will include the amount of students that are using it, some information on the titles that are being taken out. I'm going to show you a survey that was done back in 2018 that was facilitated by another school district. And then we recreated that survey and added some additional questions to get some more data points for the board to be able to consider. From there, I'm going to specifically talk about what YA is and some information specific to our library media center. So, looking at our statistics. So, first of all, we have over 12,800 print copies of resources in our library. What you're seeing now is the data from last year. So I wanted to be able to provide a full year of data for the board and for the public to be able to see. So last year, we had 9,618 books that were checked out. We added over 1,700 new books to our collection. And the top five genres for last year were graphic novels, manga, picture books, fantasy, and humor. When you're looking at library usage, we had 7,465 students come in either before or after school. That is a significant amount of students that are using this resource before and after school. Some of it, like we had mentioned earlier, was for small group projects, independent work. Some was to be able to use a technology that we offer in there or to use our Makerspace. There was over 11,000 students that came into the information center on an individual student pass during the day. So again, whether that was to come in and use technology, to take out a book, to return a book, that's how many students we had coming in just on individual passes alone. 639 classes came into the library for instruction. Most of those were either literacy classes coming in or classes that were working on research projects through multiple grade levels. Thirty-six content literacy classes used the library. Content literacy, as a reminder for the board, is a course for seventh and eighth graders that are reading on grade level but are choosing not to take a world language. So those students will go, they're actually with their core teachers during that time. But a lot of times, they will bring their students up individually to go and get resources or bring the whole class up. And then over 3,000 staff in small groups used the library last year. And then I did highlight a couple of other things that the library did throughout the year, co-teaching, literacy events, Poetry Month, number of things that were going on in the library media center. Then what I did is I wanted to give you something just a month at a glance. So I took this February, just so you can see a month, like I mentioned. So 817 books were checked out in just the month of February. We were able to add 50 new books to our collection. In that month, the top five genres were graphic novels, humor, fantasy, adventure, and horror. And again, just looking at our library usage, we are getting a significant amount of traffic, not only during the day, but before and after school in our library media center. If you have not been to Mountain View, it truly is the hub of the school. It is busy all day long. So if you ever want to go and find students who are working, find staff that are working, it's one of my favorite places to go at Mountain View. So as I had mentioned to you, in 2018, there was a survey done to talk about YA materials in grades five through eight. And 19 schools participated in that survey. Sorry, I'm trying to get to... Which was not facilitated by us, but was facilitated by another district. So again, we were able to get this survey, recreate it, so we had a little bit of data to be able to compare and then added some questions to it. So this first part is a survey from 2018. In the next part of it, I will talk about where Mountain View lands for this survey. So the first part was shelving, again, from 2018. Does your library shelve young adult literature separate from children's literature? Eighty-nine percent said no, 11% said yes. Processing. Does your library use special labels or markings to denote a book as young adult literature? Fifty-nine percent did not do that, which means only 41% did. Cataloging. Does your library attach notes to the catalog records of certain books, excuse me, intended to alert the circulation desk staff that a book is YA? All of the schools said no. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more when we get to the next survey. And then I was able to provide the board with some selected feedback that was given to us from the school that facilitated this on some of the shelving practices, on labeling, that some of those 19 schools had given. So now let's shift to this year's survey. So for this year's survey, we had 36 schools respond. Not all of them, we're just five to eight schools. We had a gamut of schools, that school districts, that responded because some of them are K-8 schools, some of them were six to 12 schools. But all of the schools that did respond all had middle school grades in it, okay? So, I was able to provide you some statistics about the school age of those that participated in the survey. So again, taking that question from 2018. Does your library shelve young adult literature separate from other literature? Eighty percent said no, 19% said yes. What I do want to make the board and the public aware of is the ones that said yes, that they do it separately, all of them had K-4, fourth grade students in their school. So that's an important point for the board to know. Our response also was no. Our YA materials are throughout the library in the genre that they belong with. One of the examples that I used over at CNE, we have a cookbook at Mountain View that is labeled YA. It's a cookbook, but it uses cooking wine in one of the recipes. So because of that, it automatically got the YA label. So that is in with the cooking books. Again, I was also able to provide some selected feedback that was given to us from some of the schools about how they shelve their books, okay? So again, ours are represented across all of our genres. Labeling practices. Does your library use special labels or markings to denote a book as young adult literature? Fifty-two point eight percent said no, 47.2 percent said yes. We do that. So we are one of the ones that does denote that it's YA. So not only do we place this on the spine of the book, and in a little bit, I'm going to show you what that looks like, but we also put it in the back of the book where the due date is, after a student checks it out. It also says that it's YA. So it's in two different spots. For the adults that are working at the circulation desk, it's there. They know that it's there, on the spine and on the due date as a reminder. Cataloging practices. Does your library attach notes to the catalog records of certain books intended to alert the circulation desk staff that the book is YA or contains mature content? Eighty-eight point nine percent said no, 11.1 percent said yes. Here's the important part about our answer for no. Yes, when somebody is working at the circulation desk and they pick up a book that a student is checking out, they can tell that it's YA. But what we do is we mark the patron accounts to let them know if a student in fifth or sixth grade has the ability to be able to check out a book. Right now, all of our fifth and sixth grade students have to have an opt-in to be able to take out any YA books out of our library. So instead of it being in on the book, we mark it on the patron account so that it's specific to that child, if they're able to take it out. Right now, we do not have any permission slip for seventh or eighth grade because of the age of the students, but we do for fifth and sixth.
Heather?
Oh, yes, sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Wendy, can you help me? Because the question said, "The book is YA or contains mature content." Is that the same or different?
Yes. So, the reason why we worded it that way is looking at the results of what was done in 2018. Some people that had done the survey did not have the same definition of YA that we did. And if you look at some of the feedback, some of the library media specialists that answered it felt like sixth graders should have access to YA materials. Our definition is different. We look at it as seventh and eighth grade, so that's why we worded it that way, Dan, to make sure that we, people weren't misinterpreting what we felt YA meant.
Helpful, thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Thanks, Dan.
Paraguardian permission. Where young adult literature is written primarily for readers aged 12 to 18, do parents of students not in the age range complete a permission slip, opt-in for their student to have access to check out YA materials out of the library? Eighty-three point three percent do not have a permission slip. We are one of the 16.7% that do. So again, we're more conservative with having that. So we have an opt-in for fifth and sixth grade students. And I think it's also important to note that we have had seventh and eighth grade parents that have contacted the school and have said, "I don't want my student to take out a YA book." So, our library media specialist is able to make that note in their patron account, so they are not able to take that out. So we work with parents. If they don't want their student to have access, they don't have to have access. We can make sure that they can't take those books out. And location, organization, and display practices. If you have a separated YA section of your library, is it located close to your circulation desk for supervision? Eighty-eight point nine percent said no, 11.1 percent said yes. So again, looking back at the small amount of schools that did in that K-4, that had kindergarten through fourth grade, they do have it close to their circulation desk. We don't, because our YA materials are spread out in different genres throughout the library. One of the things that I'd also like to mention, and I think it was important from public comment. Though YA materials spans the age of 12 to 18, and again, I'm going to talk more specifically about YA books now. The YA books that we have in our Mountain View collection have been professionally recommended for students in seventh or eighth grade or for 12 to 14-year-olds. grade or for twelve to fourteen-year-olds. So when our library media specialist is looking up titles, if it is something that is more geared towards a seventeen or eighteen-year-old, those are not the books that we're getting at Mountain View. So she looks specifically at that age group when she's looking at books. And I just wanted to mention that because that was a point that was made at public comments, so. So let's talk specifically about YA books. So YA books, like I mentioned, are geared towards students twelve to eighteen. They can be written for any genre. They, sports, anything. They normally have a teen protagonist, so their main character is normally a teenager. It focuses on their experience and self-reflection as they navigate the new world. That's what you see most often. Profanity and violence are allowed in YA, so you will see sometimes swearing, fighting, things like that that will happen in YA books. It's often told in the first person from the protagonist's point of view. Romance is allowed, but not eroticism. So when we talk about romance, it's more about that emotional connection, more of kind of that tender tone that you're looking at in books, and not eroticism, which tends to be more explicit and sexual in tone, where the emphasis is more on sexual desire and sensuality. So it's not eroticism, you see more romance.
Heather?
We also...
Hang on, Wendy, go ahead, Dan.
Sure.
Now, is that our definition of YA, or is that an edict from the school board, that last point?
So that, there has been question about very sexually explicit materials being in YA books.
Yes.
So I wanted to just give a little bit of context to eroticism versus romance as part of the explanation, but a YA book is not labeled that just based on those two things. Like I had mentioned before, the cooking book has something with alcohol in it. Sometimes it could be a drug reference. Sometimes it could be a fighting that happened. So there's different things, but because we've had some public comments specifically about that before, I wanted to make sure that that was part of the presentation.
Yeah, like a follow-up, sort of thing. But one I'm, because I heard that as well, I want to make sure, because eroticism and pornography are pretty synonymous, and do we have anything that says there shall be no eroticism or pornography in any books that we house in Goffstown schools?
By policy, Dan, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, or by actually doing. Because I want to make sure if there's something that might slip in and the arbiter should be this board, because that's where it ends up, do we have something that if someone has a problem, they have a policy or something to go to that says the school board said no?
I think when we talk about recommendations and looking at IJL and IJLR, that would be something for a policy review, Dan, to think about as they're looking at policy. Do I think it says anything explicit? And I apologize, I don't have the policy in front of me at this moment.
It doesn't, and that's why I'm mentioning it, because I did go through it, and it's concerning me that if we do policy, we're talking months away, where a book that might be considered by this board as maybe non-appropriate would take months to get to us. And if I offered a motion that would say it's not allowed, it would be immediate, and then we could take it up in IJL later. Is that making sense? I mean, can you tell me we don't have any of that?
So, Dan, here's the hard part. What somebody may consider pornography might be different than my interpretation. I'm going to be honest with you.
Totally agree, and that's why I'm thinking Merriam-Webster's definition would work, which is the same thing, eliciting eroticism or sexual excitement, something of that nature. And it's not babies being born or wine in a cookbook, it's that other piece that Merriam-Webster defines. And that's really what I've been struggling with for the last week or two.
If I could just add on, because I did see the full presentation, and something that really stood out to me that I don't think is included in this packet was when books are being bought, they look at several book lists nationally, you know, high standard book lists, and they compare the books on all of them, and if any of them come with a red flag, then they get taken, they're off, they're off the list. But if, across those four different organizations that are doing reviews of the book, and specifically, I think it's for K-12.
School Library Journal, Kirkus, Book List, Hornbook, so all of those different professional resources are ones that our library media specialists use. So they're not just making this decision on their own, they're looking at those professional recommendations.
Right, and how much do we trust those professional recommenders? Is, from my point of view, I don't know who they are, so I can't make that decision. I can only make the local decision for me.
Yep.
And like us to think about that, to see if this is something that needs more immediate action than not.
Nicole, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, especially because you explained that we have a media specialist that is specifically choosing books appropriate for grades seven, eight, or twelve, fourteen-year-olds, that I would not be comfortable making a unilateral decision to ban any of those books before proper process and review has been followed. So we have a policy for that that might need review.
Books, I'm sorry. We're not talking about any books.
Right, I thought we were talking about specific YA books that some people might believe contain eroticism.
No.
So what are we referring to then?
I'm talking about pornography or eroticism books that wouldn't be here and that would be able to come to us for a determination, not somebody else. We're the determiner.
Right, so if they're not here, why would we have to consider them?
We wouldn't if they're not here.
So then what book is your reasonable questionable?
I don't have any particular book.
My point is just that I don't think we need to make any broad swath rules. We have a policy for reviewing each book on a case-by-case basis if a parent or a student has a problem with it.
So one of the things I'd also like to go over is the major difference between middle grade books, so we also have books that are labeled middle grade, and YA literature. So middle grade literature typically does not have any profanity, any violence, any sexual contact at all besides kissing. The content may be found in young adult literature, but used only for context of the plot. Young adult literature normally is traditionally longer in length than middle grade literature, and middle grade literature is normally told in the third person that focuses on character relationships with family and friends. And like I had mentioned, young adult literature normally is told in the first person, and it focuses on interacting with the world beyond family and friends. Young adult permission slips. So again, I wanted to provide the board some context for how many students at the fifth and sixth grade level that currently have access by parent permission to YA materials. Again, as of December 2023, we had fifty-eight students in fifth grade, that's thirty-two percent of the grade level, that had access to YA materials. And at the sixth grade level, seventy-eight students, which is forty-five percent of the grade, their parents opted them in to be able to access those materials. I also provided the board a copy of the permission slip as well, so that they could see that we do have that in place. Young adult titles have been selected to be added to the information center following these guidelines, and I'm hoping, Dan, this may help a little bit with your question. So adherence to school board policy IJL, professionally recommended for students in grades seven and eight or twelve to fourteen. And I gave some examples of some of the professional sites that we use in order to vet those books before we purchase them. It meets the needs of enriching the school curriculum, it supports students' needs, and it meets the needs of our students. So again, as we're getting some feedback from students on titles that they'd like to see, we're able to add those to our collection. It develops the collection in order to provide a wide range of materials with diversity of appeal and different viewpoints for our students. When we're looking at YA, I know I've mentioned this on a couple of occasions, we label all of those books on the spine of the book as a YA material. In the back of the book where the due date is, it's marked that it's YA, and then as people are working at the circulation desk, they're able to see that it's a YA material. So again, that's a trigger for them to make sure they're double-checking the patron account, especially if it is at fifth or sixth grader, that they know that they are able to take out that book. Right now, we have currently 1,954 YA titles in our collection, and again, if you remember, we have over 12,800 books right now in our library. The average age of the collection is 2011, which means about sixteen point eight percent of the books that we have in the library are YA. I also was able to give you some information on fiction versus nonfiction and what that looks like as well. When looking at last year, we had a total circulation, and a circulation is defined as one time a book was checked out or renewed, of 1,944 YA books that were taken out, which is about twenty percent of our total circulations that were taken out of the library. One of the other things that I'll mention in regard to some public comment that was made is though the majority of our books that are being taken out of the Mountain View library are graphic novels and manga, as you saw in those percentages at the front of the presentation, they're not the genre with the most YA materials at the Mountain View library. So when you look at it, we actually have a seven, 178 titles that are social sciences, 171 that are geography and history, 161 that are medicine and technology, and when I look at graphic novels, there's eighty-seven YA totals, okay? So I wanted to make sure that I brought that up, because I think that was important from public comment, to make sure that I was clear about.
Hang on one second, Wendy, go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Wendy, just because we heard in public comment that according to, I think it was a federal Library of Congress or somebody, they said that YA had to be nonfiction, is that accurate? Because it says here that...
YA does not have to be nonfiction.
Okay, so that was, okay, just wanted to make sure that we understood that.
YA does not have to be nonfiction.
Thank you.
Thank you. So going to, I apologize, I'm switching back to my other presentation just to get out my recommendations. Looking at recommendations, so again, I'm going to talk about some of the recommendations that I made in working with our library media specialist, talking with teachers, talking with administrators over at Mountain View. So again, these were not recommendations just from me, from many of us that have been working on this project. I think that we need to come up with a district procedure for the maintenance and weeding of our book collections. So we right now do not have a procedure for our whole district of when do we take a book out of circulation? So should we come up with a procedure saying, "Okay, we bought this book in 2011," I'm using this as an example, "it's only been taken out four times, the last time it was taken out was 2013," is that a book that should stay in our library media center? So we need to look at that, and I think it should be looked at in regard to relevance of our curriculum, student interest, educational goals, but that's something that I would want our library media specialist to meet and come up with a procedure so that we have something in place, because right now we don't have anything in writing about that procedure. I also think, again, we need to look at any outdated or irrelevant materials. So as the world changes, some of the materials in the book may not, no longer be accurate, so we need to make sure that we're looking at those titles and making sure that we're not giving students information that isn't accurate. I'd also like to create quarterly professional learning community time for our library media specialists from Goffstown and New Boston to meet. Prior to our library media specialist at the elementary school teaching as part of their day, if you remember, in looking at prep times for our teachers, we added a library media block into the schedule at Maple and Bartlett. Our library media specialist used to be able to meet often, and because of that, it's been harder for them to get together. I think that we need to make sure, and this is on me, that we're able to meet quarterly to be able to work on things like district procedures, looking at policy, having conversations, making sure that we're all on the same page in Goffstown and New Boston for what we're doing in our library media centers. I also would recommend that policy review looks at policy IJL and policy IJLR. Those policies have not been reviewed since 2000, so it's been 24 years. I think it's time for it to be reviewed. I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of really good things in that policy, but looking at the school board association model policy would be something that I would ask for us to look at in conjunction with our current policy. I also think we should continue to have an opt-in forum for our fifth and sixth grade students to check out YA materials. Though we are more conservative than some of the districts that took that survey, I think that's become part of our culture, and I think that we should keep that. I also think that we should continue to label all of our YA materials in the library, so keep that practice. Again, not all districts do that, but that is part of the culture, and it is a red flag, if you will, for people working at the circulation desk to know that that is a YA material, again, looking at our fifth and sixth grade population. In doing this presentation at C and E, they also had made a recommendation to have an opt-out forum available on the Mountain View website for our seventh and eighth grade families. So like I mentioned, parents have always had the option to take that, you know, away from their seventh or eighth graders and to say, "I don't want them to take out a YA material book." Absolutely, we're happy to help with that, we want to work with parents and families, but to have something that's more accessible and streamlined on the website makes sense, and I thought C and E's recommendation was a really good one. So that is my presentation.
Wow.
Sorry, I was trying to time myself to...
That was a lot of information, so, appreciate it. So questions, comments from the board? Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Wendy, it's been a long time since I was in middle school where we could go in and take out books, but we still have the ability, or students have the ability in fifth and sixth grade to go to a shelf, pull out a book, read it while they're in the library, and put it back with not actually checking it out. So they do have access to be able to look at young adult information at this point in time.
Do I believe there could be a student that could do that? I'm sure there could be. But most students, because of the length of YA books, would not, I mean, unless they were going in there day in, day out, and doing that, and again, we've got supervision in the library media center, so people are watching and saying, "Who's taking out books?" They're checking in with kids, "Hey, what are you reading?" So they're having those conversations, so they're able to catch those situations, but...
Have we caught any of those situations, to your knowledge?
So interestingly enough, we had a student who was in sixth grade and wanted to take out a book and did not have a permission slip to be able to do so. Our library media specialist gave that student a permission slip, they had it signed, brought it in, were able to take out that book. That student brought that book home, the parent looked at it and said, "Nope, I don't want you reading this book," had the student return it, and called and said, "I do not want my student to take out a YA book." That student, the very next week, came to the information center with a friend and tried to get the friend to take out the book on their behalf, but because we have a lot of supervision, we're able to catch and say, "Nope, you don't have permission," and made contact with that parent. Again, transparency, having communication, saying, "Nope, you don't have the ability to be able to take that book out." So again, we've got a library media specialist in there, and we've got two paraprofessionals that work either the morning or afternoon shift, and they know our students. They're having conversations with them about what they're reading. Students are going to them with interest, and because they know our kids, they're able to check up on that. So I think we've got a pretty good setup, to be honest with you, Jared.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else? Go ahead, Brian.
Wendy, first of all, thank you for the great hard work. I'd like to thank Mrs. O'Reilly and the other library media specialists who worked together to compile all of this great information. So this all started with the memo that I issued to you. Do you feel, apart from these recommendations, that there's anything else we should be doing at this point in time?
Not at this time. I would like to see when we do review policy IJL, obviously if there's any changes in that policy could impact work that's done in our library media center as far as curation, as far as weeding books out, so we'll have some work to do, but I don't have any other recommendations at this time.
Is that a policy media specialist should review first?
So I think that's a really great question, Heather. I think just like with other policies, so for example, if we have a technology policy, Stephen Borger looks at that and gives recommendations. So it would be my hope that we would have our library media specialist look at our policy, look at the model policy from the school boards association, make some recommendations, but I also think administration should also be a part of those conversations as well. That would be my recommendation for that.
Go ahead, Dan.
And we have high school, middle school...
Elementary.
In elementary.
Yes.
So it's not just one.
Correct.
We have a variety.
Yes.
Right. So is that something that they can start working on?
Absolutely.
I mean, it wouldn't be for the next policy meeting, but maybe May?
I'm sure that...
Because we only meet May, maybe June.
I'm sure I can ask them to work on that, absolutely.
It may not be something this school year, unfortunately, because it takes time to go through.
I'd like to aim for May if we can. It'll never come back to this board in time for this year, but at least... It'll never come back to this board in time for this year, but we can start.
Right. But we can at least view it and look at it. Yeah. So if that's something you guys are going to start doing?
Yep, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Is there anything else you need with the recommendations? Do you need a motion or from the board to go with them, or...
I don't think I need any recommendations, Mr. Bulkey.
No.
I think that, you know, if the board, you know, I just like to get all of those things in motion. So I don't think that I need a, you know, a formal motion from the board, but...
Is anybody opposed to any of the recommendations? I think they're good recommendations.
Great. Okay.
I do too, and I think the weeding out of the collections is important. I think that that's a piece that's missing, there's no systematic way to how that's done, there's no, there are no metrics, so I think that makes a lot of sense. And in fact, the three books that are to me on appeal, when I looked at the circulation frequency of those books, they have barely been checked out in, you know, years and years and years. So I think that that is something that is needed, and to have something systematic so that all the library media specialists are following the same set of criteria, the same frequency, et cetera. I think that makes a lot of sense.
And if I could just thank Mrs. O'Reilly, she worked incredibly hard with me on this presentation, was able to get schools to fill out the survey, and I just, I can't thank her enough because there was a lot of work that went into this, so I very much appreciate her hard work.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, I know it's behind me on the screen for viewers, but will this be on the SAU website for families to see a little clearer? I don't know how clear they can see this.
I believe it's also part of the notes, I did give everything.
We can put the presentation in the minutes, attached to the minutes.
Yep, absolutely.
Just so it might be clearer to see for everyone. All right, is there anybody else, any questions, comments before we move on? All right. I'm going to turn that off. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the April, oh, not April, March 18th. I'm going ahead of myself. The March 18th School Board Meeting Minutes, everybody have a chance to read them. Anybody see anything? So I'll need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the March 18th, 2024 minutes as presented.
Thanks, Shane. Do I have a second? Like Jenny? Any further discussion? CNA, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, committee reports, A and F.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve a total manifest this evening, the amount
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second? Like Caroline? Go ahead, Dan.
We have some payroll taxes and benefits, that $929 million. We have...
Thousand.
Oh, it is only a thousand. You're right, 900, that's, we just overspent our budget by more than that other school district did.
Maybe we do need that tax cap.
Yeah, there we go, just a little, 900, I must be dealing with this...
Speed budget or something.
Thank you. 929,000. Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Okay, back, back to reality. Sped activity, the Bedford School District, for out of district, $28,350. Crest Collaborative, out of district, tuition, $10,670. Durham School Services are busing, $111,500. I'm rounding, of course. Johnson ABA Consulting, sped contracted services, $7,750, and Mr. Gross, I'm not sure what they did. If you remember, Caroline, you remember?
A lot.
The ABA, Johnson ABA Consulting, is that behavioral?
That's behavior.
That is our board certified behavioral analyst.
Oh, we might be talking about that a little later.
In fact.
All right, Nashua Children's Alliance, $5,850. General expenses from Amazon, nine grand. Blue and Services is the rooftop unit, $27,750. For, that's either eight, some kind of HVAC stuff. EverSource, $24,000. Dead River for propane, $18,400. Impact Fire Service, some more piping. I think it's at MVMS, it's very old, $5,400. New Hampshire Musculos Skeptical Athletic Trainer Contract, $6,400. Granite State Child No Intel Mandatory Training, $58,500. And then we bought some food for $16,200.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, Scott, you want to...
I think, oh, just one for the, for the board. We did have a power failure at, over the weekend at Maple Avenue School. We did unfortunately lose some of our perishables in our refrigerator and freezer. We are able to put in an insurance claim for that, so just wanted to let the boards know. Same thing happened in New Boston the weekend before. We don't have generators at these, some of these facilities, and insurance claim is being submitted.
You also have the preliminary budget stuff on here for 2025, 2026?
Oh.
Timeline schedule?
Timeline schedule.
Yeah, so I gave that to Denise this afternoon to provide to you. We're trying to just get, get a little bit ahead of, so that you're prepared. We haven't given you yet the FY '24, '25 School Board Calendar, but if you could just kind of take a look at this, trying to do some of our prep work in terms of the SAU a little bit earlier, but if you look at the dates when it, when it would go to the School Board, the dates of the Goffstown meetings, which is usually the first and third, the way things are kind of lining up, they may conflict with some New Boston Board meetings, so I don't know how that is going to, you know, translate, but it's possible that we might have to do a Monday and a Tuesday back-to-back in October. So just be mindful of that. So don't need anything immediately now, but I, and I think we'll probably prepare what the next year's School Board Meeting calendar will look like, but we typically, Jared knows this, we typically do these presentations first or second week of October with a, combined with the Budget Committee, and then the School Board typically goes through those budgets line by line in the month of October with a couple of work sessions, and then we, we attempt to deliver that to the Budget Committee by that first week in November or last week in October. So it's just, it's very similar to what we do, except we might have to go back-to-back days, depending upon how New Boston does their meetings.
And you're all...
Thank you, sir.
Did you have something? Okay. Are you all set, Scott?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. All right, Jared, your turn.
Oh, okay. There is a meeting on April 16th at 6:00 PM right here in the Media Center for the Budget Meeting. That is the first one after the elections.
Awesome. Thank you, Jared.
Jared, what was, I'm sorry, what was that again?
April 16.
April 16.
PNC, Retta?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Nicole, who is the new chair.
Okay, you're going to have to probably redo that next time because we haven't done committee assignments yet, and that'll be changing.
Okay.
But, go ahead, Nicole.
Okay. We'll call it tentative.
That's all right, I'm sure it won't change.
So one of the biggest things we're talking about right now is Spring Fest, which is coming up on the 13th. I think most of you have signed up for a slot, so if you haven't and you could do that, that would be great, we just have one or two left to fill. Retta was also taking some photos tonight. If you haven't sent a headshot, we really need board photos, so if you haven't sent one, please grab one of us to get one tonight. You can still send one to either of us, and we'll replace it if you don't like the one we take in person. But we need a picture for the display. We've started some plans, we're both Volunteer Week, which is the week of April 21st, as well as Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, which is May 6th, and we will be asking everyone to preferably participate in a video for our Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. We'll have more details about that next time after we talk to GTV. And we're cleaning up a final version of the Mission and Vision Statement, and we plan to have that to you, the meeting ahead of retreat, so that we can officially discuss it during the retreat. And that's it. Our next meeting will be May 6th.
Awesome. Thank you, Nicole. All right, Policy Review, we have a meeting April 8th at 5:30 at the SAU, and later on, we have some policies to review. CNE, Jenny. We haven't met, obviously, and we have a meeting on April 8th at 7 at the SAU.
Thanks, Jenny. SAU Board Meeting, Shane.
Yeah, the SAU 19 Board is going to meet this Wednesday, April 3rd, at 6:30 PM at the SAU offices. If we need to postpone due to weather, we will let you all know. We'll see what's going on, I don't know.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It was brought up tonight, so we'll see what happens.
Thanks, Shane. Technology Committee, Dan.
I emailed Mr. Borget. Unfortunately, I saw him tonight but forgot to ask him. He's going through that report, and hopefully we'll meet in the next couple of weeks so that we can come and report out in May. That's my goal.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. All right, Superintendent's Report.
I'm going to apologize in advance, I've got about three and a half pages, so I'm going to try to do a condensed version. So Mr. Gross mentioned the power blip we had over the weekend that resulted in two fridges and two freezers that were a total loss. I'd like to recognize and thank Megan Bizarro, our incredible Food Services Director, who continues to be nothing but flexible, and her great accommodating staff who made it work today and figured out how we were going to make sure that we got kids fed when we walked into school and had that surprise. So we received some good news from Health Trust, which is the vendor we use for our insurances, our health insurance, and we received notification that our budgeted rate for our guaranteed maximum rate was 14.2%, and we were notified that our rate for next year will be 9.3%. So that's really good news for us, and that is going to mean about $318,000 of savings for next year. So when you think about our challenges around the default budget being $307,000 off, this covers the majority of that. We're still evaluating the potential impact, but our preliminary analysis would be to target that money being available for tax relief for FY '26. So we'll talk more about that. Although this is a little unusual, this does happen a couple times over the course of 10 years. So we actually, Kate printed out, and we went through what the difference is between the guaranteed maximum rate and what our actual rate had been, and this does happen about a couple times every 10 years. So this is one of the times, and will result in some reductions, which we appreciate. Shane mentioned the weather. We did start to look at the calendar for next week. If Wednesday's night, Wednesday night's SAU Board Meeting is problematic, we have looked at the next week, and I think that we were looking at potentially Tuesday or Thursday, but we'll see what, what the weather brings. I happened to see the WMUR forecast tonight, and boy, the, the difference 50 miles is going to make. You might go from two or three inches in rain and a little bit of mixed precip to 18 inches. So holy cow, when you see the map, it's, it's a little concerning, but we'll see what it brings. This past Friday, I had the unbelievable experience of announcing that Mrs. Pischka will be the new principal moving to the Bartlett Elementary School. Kate and I had the chance to go over to Bartlett and make the announcement along with Jerry at Bartlett, and Wendy and Mr. Gross had the chance to go over to be with Mrs. Pischka when she made the announcement to her staff. We did it at the same time because we obviously had information that impacted both schools, and concurrent with that, we sent out notification to our families at Glen Lake, at Bartlett, and at Maple Ave. So all of those notifications have gone out, and I would again extend my appreciation to Mrs. Pischka for her willingness to take on a new assignment during her last three years with us in the Goffstown School District. So it's incredible. Eclipse. So I have a video that will be going out tomorrow with some safety tips and some information around logistics. We are making it easy for parents that want to keep their kids out of school that day. That's a decision I respect, parents to make. So we're going to have a form that parents can fill out to either have their kids be on the absent list, or for students who might be dismissed early that day, we have kind of a streamlined process to make those things easy. So that'll go out tomorrow along with some information, so more to come on that. Wendy gave me a very long list of all the activities that are being done that focus on the eclipse across all schools, all grade levels, there's a big long list, Wendy would be happy to talk to you about it. So this is a really exciting one. Goffstown High School math teacher, Matt Chadbourne, has partnered with Bartlett Elementary School Principal Jerry Gogen and her Bartlett teachers to provide National Honor Society math tutors for Bartlett. So students have the ability to go over and provide some support, but what's really interested is Goffstown High School math teachers have been asked and are providing support with instruction and collaboration with their elementary counterparts, and really looking at that vertical alignment of math. So from the young grades up through high school, and the ability to have our teachers helping and teach each other is a really terrific partnership, and I really appreciate the work that's being done that Wendy's overseeing. Our SAU Safety Team met on March 19th. We reviewed potential impact of default budgets for both town and school, and we worked on a planning process for the supplemental door locks. So we have, that process has started. Mr. Loring is doing some classroom analysis, and will be, more to come on that. We're also planning a tabletop activity for our next meeting in May. The Board may recall, for the winter season, we used a platform called SportsU, which is a communication tool that our athletics program and our co-curriculars were using in the spring. We will be using that again this spring for coaches. It was a successful kind of pilot over the winter, and we will be continuing with that platform with more information going out. I wanted to let the Board know that this past weekend, the Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, held their annual event. This is an overnight field trip that we've had kids go to for many, many years. I apologize to the Board, that request for the overnight field trip did not come to you in time for the event, and I did approve it. So I wanted to let you know, I did notify the Chair, I apologize that the information did not get to the Board in time. We've, not to make excuses, but we've had a change in our advisor in that program mid-year, so things have been a little disrupted, but I didn't want the kids to suffer, I didn't want the program to suffer, so I wanted to let you know that happened.
Did they do that in Manchester?
Yes. Yep.
It was local.
Local. And actually, so speaking of policies, one of the things I'd like to consider is our ability for repeat trips to maybe bring them in one batch. They're always the same ones throughout the year, and I wondered if the Board might be open to the idea of me bringing a batch of out-of-state field trips or overnight field trips, and then if new ones come up, I would bring them to you during the course of the year. But the ones that you approve every year, year after year, it's the same ones, I wonder if we could do them in one batch. So that's maybe something we could think about moving forward. So with respect, the Board received public comment tonight. I did receive a request to remove three books from the Goffstown High School Library, consistent with policy IJLR. A Materials Review Committee considered the request and denied it. Per policy, the request then comes to me. I would share, and it was shared during public comment, there is no timeline in the policy, so it is on my list. I will be working on it, but I'm not going to commit to a timeline at this point, and I do want the Board to know that if I deny the request, they come next to the Board for your consideration. I also wanted to share with the Board, right-to-know requests continues to be a significant burden on, on the school district or districts. I currently have four current requests that are in process, and what's interesting now is we're starting to see requests that are submitted in multiple school districts across the state. So very, very long, tedious, laborious, right-to-know requests being submitted, exact same request, multiple school districts, seeking hundreds of thousands of pages of records. So I just share that with you so you're aware.
Brian?
Yep.
What information are people seeking?
Well, if you'd like to see the whole list, I'd be happy to bring it to the Board anytime you would like me to.
Yeah, I kind of would, because I can't imagine what's going on that...
Well, it's, so a couple of thoughts. The intent of the right-to-know law is about transparency of government.
Right.
It's about, so we had a presentation today, let's say Mrs. Kohler's presentation. So Mrs. Kohler's presentation, this is a document that went to a quorum of the School Board, this is a public document. If someone were to submit a right-to-know request, they would get a copy of this. You don't have to, we're going to include it in the minutes, but just as an example. That's historically how I've always had right-to-know requests. It's someone looking for a specific document or a certain piece of information. What they're starting to be now are more open-ended, wide casting of a net that potentially has tens of thousands of pages of content that have to be evaluated and have to be redacted. There are a lot of school districts that pay their attorneys to do that, and they spend tens and tens of thousands of dollars on attorney fees just for right-to-know requests. So, we haven't done that historically. That burden has largely fallen on me, but I share this with the Board just so you're aware that it is a major time burden.
We had talked a while back about hiring somebody to do that. You have, like superintendent work to do instead of, you know, going through files all the time.
Yep.
Wouldn't it, I mean, at some point, should we get at least a part-time person or go through on that? I mean, I believe in transparency, absolutely, but when it gets to the point where that's what the superintendent is doing...
Well, it's not just this superintendent, this particular example, it's superintendents across the state dealing with the exact same submission from the exact same person. So, maybe, maybe there is a very genuine interest that someone is looking for that information across multiple school districts, or maybe it's a tool of disruption. I won't judge which.
Dan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, there's an intent of transparency in the RSA 91A law, and there's things called fishing expeditions. We have been seeing a lot of uptick in a fishing expedition. Give me all of this stuff. I am not in favor of paying anybody outside of our own staff because the law is currently saying, this is my interpretation of it, if you're gonna go for a fishing expedition, it's gonna take a while. Okay? So, when we have the appropriate amount of time to respond to your fishing expedition, we'll do it, and we'll just keep communicating with you the time it's gonna take to get to your fishing expedition. And if it takes two or three years, it takes two or three years. It's ridiculous, some of the things that might be coming down. They ask for a copy. You get it tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Not a big deal. You've got this. It's over available on the website. And it's just not school districts. It's all over government right now. And I've been involved in some of these, having to assist in the response, and you asked the question, and I think we talked about it the last meeting, it's in the minutes, where there's a thought process of continuing to have the ability to possibly negotiate with the requester, saying, what are you looking for? And to be helpful, so, I mean, not to try to encourage more or less individuals asking for information, there's sometimes you really wanna get that information, and it's important. We're doing a study, we're doing this. It's there. And I think this Board and administration is doing a pretty good job keeping transparent. But, I wouldn't wanna hire anyone to do something that the law allows us to say, hey, listen, you asked for something big, and you don't think we're fast enough, then go to court and let a judge say, oh, my goodness, yeah, you're not going fast enough, you are. There are some that stonewall, and that's what it's for. But, if we have a place that it's stonewall, then people can come, they can sit at the table, and they can say, hey, I think you're stonewalling. But, it's, there's a process that we can follow without having to spend more money.
And speaking of process or processes, one of the things I'd like to consider is creating a form that anyone who wants anything through right-to-know would need to fill out one standardized form that has kind of a one-stop-shop with all the information that we would be seeking. So, and I'd like those to be signed, I'd like to have a process that's a little more standardized as opposed to just people kind of emailing or calling. I'd like to have a form that anyone who makes a right-to-know request...
Can we do that?
Yeah.
In the law?
So, there are districts that already do it. I haven't started to get into the detail on that, but that's something I'd like to look at for the future. Yep. So, just a few more things, if I may, I apologize for the duration of time. So, there's a new funding plan being discussed and conquered around school funding. Kind of the short version of this plan is it would increase adequacy money from around $4,100 per pupil next year to about $7,300 per pupil, and I think this sounds like really good news for the most part. This model would create around 53 property wealthy towns that would then again become donor towns that would fund property poor towns. So, again, state aid will come in the form of a local property tax that's raised locally, retained locally, and called state aid. This one comes with a few more pieces, though. I would fully expect the 53 donor towns to turn around and sue the state, so we will now have just another round of yet another school lawsuit, and, you know, four years later, you start to get another one. It's just the continuation. But, this new model would impose a cap on what local increases can be, kind of like a tax cap, where local spending can only be increased by the Consumer Price Index unless you have increased enrollment, and if a local community wants to spend more than the CPI, a two-thirds local vote is required. Two-thirds vote. So, if you want to increase your spending beyond whatever the Consumer Price Index is, you need two-thirds of the voters to give you authorization. Can anyone think of anything that two-thirds of people can agree on, on any topic? It's a big deal. So, I would share with you, while I like the idea of $7,400 in adequacy, if it comes with these other issues, it is problematic. Scott, did you have something?
Yeah, I would agree totally with what you said. I would also say that special education costs are not part of the Consumer Price Index for either the Northeast or New England or the United States. Just want that to be clear.
Thank you, Scott.
What about pre-bargained CBAs? Okay, so you could, we bargained, and ours were, right now, it's not a problem, but it could be if the CPI goes down.
Well, I think at this point, you know, like any bill, it's going through the process. So, you know, let's see what happens. You know, I appreciate the idea of putting more money on the table for public education, but when that more money comes in the form of a local property tax that's raised locally and retained locally and called state aid, I don't know that I agree with that, and I never have. It's an easy way for the state to do it, but I'm just not convinced that that's actually state aid. I mentioned the ED 306 standards. Again, I have the same concerns around adequacy and possibly the intent of reducing the minimum standard so that a future lawsuit might be impacted. I wanted to let the Board know that I have mentioned the Impact Fee Project that Mr. Gross and I have been working with the Planning Board's consultant on. We will be moving forward with a legal opinion from Attorney Gordon Graham on this. We have some disagreements, and after we get the legal opinion, we will plan to have a non-public session with the Board to review the legal opinion, but more to come, and we did notify the Town of our intent to pursue the legal opinion, really over kind of maybe some disagreements around that. So, in the fall, we had talked about our enrollment concerns at Maple Ave in our fourth grade sections for next year. We had talked about possibly moving sections to Mountain View. I just wanted to again share that that's not happening, we're not doing that at this point. We're gonna be able to move our sections around a little bit between grade levels, and we're gonna be able to add another section of fourth grade for next year and reduce, I think, is it second grade?
First grade.
First grade. That we're gonna be able to reduce one section. So, it's gonna be okay. It'll bring our class sizes down a little bit, be around 24 in fourth grade and around 20 in first grade. So, pretty good overall for Maple Ave. Mrs. McGrath is here, so she would be very happy to answer any questions that anyone may have if I don't do an effective job explaining this. But, we were notified by Health Trust of a few benefit plan changes. Effective January 1st, 2025, Health Trust will change its over-65 retiree plan to a fully insured Anthem Medicare Advantage with Prescription Drug Benefit, MAPD Plan. As such, retiree claims will no longer be part of our rating with Health Trust, nor will the enrollees be reported with our claims experience. This plan will cost our retirees $406.99 to $434.44 per month less than their current plan options with prescription drug coverage, and there are currently 52 enrollees in this plan, in these plans. We currently also offer our enrollees a Medicare Supplement Plan without prescription drug coverage. There are 78 enrollees in this plan. Given the higher volume of enrollees and retirees enrolled in this plan, we will continue to focus, to continue to offer this for our retirees. No new retirees will be allowed to enroll in this plan after December 31st, 2024. As of 7/1/24, this plan is $71.82 less than the new MAPD Plan option. So, I asked Mrs. McGrath the question, given this, what does this have to do with the perennial audit finding that we have, that we do not have an actuarial study for retirees and the impact on our health insurance rates? We're not entirely sure. We thought that was a really interesting question, and I think Mr. Gross is gonna pursue that a little more with Cheryl Pratt, our auditor. So, if anyone would've wondered if there was any impact on the actuarial study, as I anticipated, at least one person might wonder, we don't really know, but maybe. That was a lot for me to share, so I would stop there and ask if there are any questions, anything I can clarify.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, in your experience or knowledge with the Town about the impact fees, are there meetings that you know of that maybe we want to have some people attend just to listen in? Because I know that I would be very interested in doing that, as maybe some other members of the Board would be as well.
That's a great question.
Not yet.
Mr. Gross?
Not yet.
If you find out, I mean, I'm gonna talk to some members that I have at the Town, but I'd love to know that if you find out.
We will, we will let the Board know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Do they have any meetings scheduled? Okay. So, thank you. Good, good, good idea.
Anyone else? Questions?
I had one more that I forgot to include. Jack, we ordered you one of the SAU shirts. So, at the SAU office, we have the tie-dye SAU 19 Board Member Shirt. So, we got one for you, we got one for Nicole, and so those are in the office if you wanna pick them up. And I'm sorry, we didn't bring them tonight.
You could bring them Wednesday.
We got them for you.
If you don't pick them up Wednesday.
They'll be there Wednesday.
They'll be there Wednesday.
So, in fact, if we're there Wednesday, those shirts will be there for you.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I just, just so we're on the same page, CIP, I got, they're starting that earlier this year, so I don't know who our CIP rep will be. They used to do it in...
June.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's gonna, well, they used to do it in July. So, now they're doing it on June 20th as the school district. They used to do this in July.
Yeah.
For our presentation, but now it's June 20th.
We'll have to let Mr. Loring know.
He does know already. I sent him an email.
He's right there.
I know.
Him and Steve, but I didn't let our, we have a rep to that, right?
Yes, that's coming up later in the agenda.
We're getting there.
We're getting there. All right, so you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, so moving on, we have questions for policies from last week or two weeks ago. Does anybody have any questions on any of the policies? You should've had your packet from last time. No? Okay, so these will come the next meeting for moving forward. And then, we have the second read for policy EHAA. So, we changed some wording around. We didn't have this last time, so if everybody's good with that, we can make a motion to move that forward.
Move to approve policy EHAA as amended.
Thank you, Nicole. Do I have a second? By Caroline? Any further discussion? Okay, see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so now we have subcommittee stuff. Thank you, everybody, for getting this to me. I made copies, which are in your packet. I tried to give everybody what they wanted. So, Jack, what we usually do is go through it tonight, make sure everybody is on board with it, make a motion to move forward with it, and then the next set of meetings will be the new people. And where you see alternates, on some of our committees, we have an alternate, so if someone is not able to attend, they need to let the Chair of that committee or Denise know as soon as possible, so they can contact the alternate, who is always in the loop of everything that's going on, and they would then step into that committee. So, the first committee is the Finance Committee. That's Dan, Caroline, and myself, and Jared as the alternate. C and E, we have Ginny, Retta, and Nicole, and Caroline as the alternate. Planning and Communication, we have Retta, Nicole, and Jack, with Shane as the alternate. Figured you were pretty versed in that.
Yep.
Goffstown Policy Review would be Dan, Shane, myself, and Retta as the alternate. Goffstown High School Theater, I have Jared.
Do we need that anymore?
Yeah.
I was wondering the same thing.
It was on there, and I just put Jared and Nicole as alternate, but I don't know if we're doing it anymore.
No.
So, take that off?
Yeah.
Okay. So, take that off. The SAU Policy Review, which we haven't met in a while, is Dan, Shane, myself, and Retta as the alternate. ADA Committee is Ginny. Budget, I have Jared and Jack as the alternate. CIP, I have Jack and Jared as the alternate. GTV Cable is Retta. Technology is Dan. And then, our negotiations, GESS is our support staff only, that would be me. Jared would be G E A N, G E S S, which is our teachers and support staff. Caroline is the teachers only, and Jack would be both. And then, Area is Dan, Ginny, and Nicole. So, once we approve these, I will get the new Boston reps, because they also sit on boards, and we have alternates for them, and then we will email you the final draft. So, does anybody have any questions, they want something changed? Everybody good with what I did? Jack, do you have any questions about anything?
I'm good right now.
Okay. If you do, let us know. Go ahead, Jared.
Not for this year, but as we move forward, just for the negotiations, I know that we broke out some groups because they had a conflict of interest to do one versus the other or both.
Right.
I don't know if those conflicts still exist or if we're gonna continue to kind of combine them, because I know that from the last cycles, having the same people at the negotiating table was, having that synergy was very important.
Yeah.
And, you know, Jack having both of them, meeting on both of them, I don't know if we want a third person to be on both of them as well.
Yeah, I don't think with the four that are there, there's a conflict at all.
No, 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 he was talking about me.
Yeah, I know, and you're not on them anymore.
And that's when we separated it out.
Yeah.
And I had mentioned that if we wanted, if I would be on it last year, and I kinda said only if I had to, I could do both, but there is none.
There is none this year.
And we have nothing for this year, but just as we move forward, if we wanna kinda combine three to do all of them.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Then, Heather, I just wanted to add, I'm not on a lot of committees, so if anyone's feeling burdened or...
Here, I wrote it all out. Everybody is on about the same.
Okay, good.
I mean, I did, that was part of my process too, is making sure not one person had too much and one too little. So, yes, you're on like three of them, Retta.
Okay, good.
You're good. I tried to make this as equal as possible and give everybody what they requested. Still, if everybody's...
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to approve the committees.
Motion to approve the committees as presented.
Thank you, Nicole. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Caroline? Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. I'll send you my thing, and we'll get the new Boston stuff in.
So, Scott, if you can plan A and F as an administrative start at the next, in two weeks, that'd be great.
Because we'll do all new chairs for the next subcommittee meeting.
Yep.
The first one. Okay. All right, new business, we have a field trip.
So, we have a request from Goffstown High School to take students down to Walden Pond. This is a repeat trip. We will be bringing students down on May 17th, May 20th, May 21st, and May 23rd. So, we, as this is an out-of-state trip down to Massachusetts, seeking your approval, please.
Motion to approve the field trip for each date presented, the trip to Walden Pond.
Thank you, Caroline. I have a second. I have a motion by Caroline, a second by Ginny. Any further questions, Shane? Did you have your hand up?
No, I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
The class that is going, is it...
American Literature.
Juniors. Juniors.
American Literature.
And they're going down...
And they're going to the Thoreau Institute at Walden Woods.
Do we have busing for them, or...
We do have busing.
That's amazing.
It's, yeah, kinda, don't say it too loud.
All right.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye. See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Have a great time.
Thank you.
All right, CRF Projects.
So we're going to invite Mr. Loring up to the table, our Facilities Director, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gross.
Yeah, I think I'm going to go up there with Randy on this one. No, not that I... What? Come on. Come on down.
Hi, Randy, welcome.
Thank you. All right, we wanted to talk about two topics, of which we did discuss in the A and F Committee Meeting. The first is with respect to the EMC project and the Mountain View Middle School roof, the flat roof that is over the library. So I'm going to turn this over to Randy, just to give you an update as to where we stand on the EMC project, but also for him to kind of expand on the issues that we're seeing at Mountain View with the roof over the library. The folks from EMC, I will say that with a lot of force have been in our buildings a lot in the last three weeks. They're really close to the end of gathering the data that they need to come and make a presentation to you all with the final bids that they have. And I'll say with that, while the folks with EMC were here, is we did have an issue with the Mountain View Middle School roof over the library, as Scott has mentioned. The current roof system that is there now is a ballasted roof system that is over that roof, over that space, I should say. And a ballasted system is a, they have insulation that they put down on the top of the roof deck, they stretch rubber over it, they seam it together with hot tar, and then they put rocks on the top of it. And that's what holds the membrane in place. Issue with that system, it is actually the cheapest route to go with putting on a roofing system, because it's not as labor-intensive as putting on a fully adhered roofing system, which has a lot of securing cleats that are across the roof deck that actually hold the insulation and the rubber membrane in place so that it doesn't move. This roof system has been moving a lot, it's been tearing seams. It is not something that has just been happening, it's been happening in the eight years that I have been here with constant repairs, over the last eight years, over this particular section at the Mountain View Middle School. It's at a point where the repairs are endless, and the amount of water that we take inside of the library every time it rains or snows, it's hard to control. So I had asked that we reach out to the folks from EMC if we could add this project to their list to do the summer. And the roof system that I am recommending is a Carlisle roof system, which is a fully adhered system, as I had said. It's a environmentally friendly type of a roof system, which sheds heat in the summer and kind of holds heat a little bit in the wintertime. It has good R-value factors, which the folks from EMC has communicated to us, that the folks from Eversource have a lot of rebates, are really nice rebates, if currently we have a three-inch insulation depth that by increasing the insulation, that the folks from Eversource with the rebates that they have, will pay for a bulk of that insulation. And if we, and with the folks from EMC, is this is something that they have done in many districts across New Hampshire, because if we were trying to do it internally, we would need to get an engineer in place to talk about the elevations, the pitches, to making sure that everything is pitching to the drains, looking at details that relate to terminations inside of the drains, on the edges, on the drip edges, and then on the seaming itself, and when you go over any parapits in the system itself, is giving those details to the contractors, so everybody is bidding on the same thing. It also outlines and defines the span in which the devices that use to hold the membranes down are spaced across the system. I like the Carlisle system, because it's a 30-year system, it's a 90-millimeter-thick roofing deck, a system where currently it's a 60. So with the 30-year, and it's great, and the folks from Carlisle come out from time to time to making sure that the installers, as well as the folks with EMC overseeing the project, to ensure that they're following the guidelines that Carlisle lays out for proper installation, or the installation of their system, to give it the 30-year warranty. So I said, I had recommended to Scott that we go with them for these reasons, that if we were trying to do it in-house anyway, that we would incur costs to be able to get it done. So that's kind of where we are with that, and plus with all the other work that they're doing, that I believe within the next week, we're going to be hearing from them as their final findings of what they've done in our buildings with our mechanical systems, and our lighting systems.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? Go ahead, Nicole.
Can you remind me, so EMC did this, the whole report a few months ago, that we reviewed about all the different needs. Was this one of the items that was already detailed, just in a later phase?
Later phase.
So we're just pulling it in because it's failing and it needs to be done now?
Correct. And, yeah, that is, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Just summing it up.
Thanks, Nicole.
I would just share, if you didn't see Randy's memo, that should be in your board packet. It includes, I just think it's really helpful, Randy always does a good job explaining things. He shows you on the schematic which roof it is. So this is the Section A, which is the flat section above the library and a few other areas, but it's that Section A on the map. And the next page shows an example of that ripped seam. So this is an example, you can see that they've tried to tar it, patch it, put it together, keep the membranes together, but invariably, these continue to leak.
Correct.
And it's in the library?
And it's in the library.
So...
Which is not a great place.
Books are getting moved every time there's a storm.
Yep.
So more to follow from EMC, but we did reach out to them a couple of weeks ago when we, you know, learned of this, and said, okay, makes sense for them, especially since they have the expertise one, but there are rebates when insulation is involved, which would be beneficial to us, so that's kind of, and on the back page, there's more pictures. So the second part of why Randy is here is to start the discussion about any potential capital reserve fund projects that might occur over the summertime. Again, we discussed this at the A and F Meeting earlier, and the sheet that you have in front of you, just a disclaimer, you know, this was a list that I compiled, and I know you're smiling, because it was the BA list, right? So Randy's list is actually in a different order, and so we defer to Randy, but I didn't have Randy with me when I had to do this, so that being said, there's a couple of things on here, and Randy, if you, you know, you had spoke with me that the fire panel right now, although it's 30 years old, it's not had... It's functioning as it should. Right. And I hate to say that out loud, that there are instances in here that you will also see with the cistern project Phase Two, that it's about every day around 10 o'clock, there is a enunciator that will sound in the front of the building where the receptionist sits, that they have to get up from their chair, go in and acknowledge it, and it stops. That enunciator is not related to the fire panel, even though that's what sets it off, it's related to the cistern tank that's on the bottom of the hill. And we had to put in a new panel in that building to communicate with the main building of what's happening in that space, if the generator should start. What keeps sounding is it has a sensor mode in it that detects water level in the tank. It doesn't have a level in the tank that says the water is three-quarters full or it's full, although we check it frequently to make sure that it is full, because there is no sensor connected to it. It sends a trouble alert to the school every day at 10 o'clock, because that's when it runs its cycle, to see what's going on. And when the other portion of the cistern tank is done, it's going to have that device installed in it. So number one, it stops ringing up to the building, that it will only ring if there is actually a problem. The cistern tank is the Phase Two, we did it three years ago, where we had all the epoxy that was dumped in that tank scraped out of the inside of the tank. We had another coating sprayed on the inside of the tank. And during this process too, is we found that the vortex plate that is inside of the tank, that sits over the top of the 10-inch suction tube for the pump, is deteriorated to the point where they didn't want to touch it. So we worked around not touching that plate, because afraid that if it crumbled, it would leave us in a very bad position, where we wouldn't have that cistern tank available to us until we had a new vortex plate made. And that vortex plate, what it does is that, as that 10-inch suction tube is pulling water from the pump, from the tank, is it stops the tank from creating a whirlpool in the tank, so it just drafts into that 10-inch suction tube. Because if it did do a whirlpool, and if you've ever seen how a whirlpool works, in the center creates a space of air, and the issue would be that air would get pulled into the pump, would cavitate the pump and destroy the pump. That's the purpose of that plate, is to stop the inside of that tank from creating a circular whirlpool inside the tank. So part of this project will be creating, or having a new vortex plate built. Current one now is suspended off of the 10-inch pipe that goes through the wall, which is why we had to, number one, take and do so much work in that tank three years ago, is because the seal had constant pressure of that vortex plate hanging off of the end of it, which started leaking, and it had leaked and progressively got worse, they kept trying to tighten the seal, and it just got to the point where we had to replace the seal, and it was a real problem resealing it because of that issue, which it has sealed, thank goodness, but then with that as well, is the way they cored the hole through the wall is they cored it too close to the pump. So there's a lot of turns that are happening to get it to connect to the pump, and you don't want a lot of changes of direction when you're sucking water out of a tank into a pump, because one, water is very abrasive, and it will deteriorate the corners, and as well as you reduce CFM to that pump with every turn that it takes. So they need to push the pipe over more, and then core another hole into the wall, seal the hole that's there, and then put the plate in on a stand on its own over the top of that suction plate, then reseal the tank again, because the guarantee or the warranty on the tank is expired. So with that, we're going, part of our school board retreat, we're going to be talking about that very large project and funding for that, et cetera. We're looking to do that, not this coming summer, but the summer after that. Reason being, it shuts Mountain View Middle School down for pretty much the entire summer, cannot have summer school there, you just have to have fire protection, water, et cetera. So plan on hearing a lot more of vortexes and suction and...
Super expensive.
Yeah, so you're, cavitation's a good one. Learned a new word. But what I wanted just to share with you is I think that we have been dealing with these Mountain View café tables, which used to be here at Gostown High School, then went over to Mountain View, been doing tons of repairs to them. It's a safety issue, when, nodding your head, so I think this is something which would be pretty high up on the list of a capital reserve fund-type project. The next one, pretty high order of magnitude, is the district phone system. Again, Steven Borget has three to four different options. One of them is replacing our existing equipment, which is no longer in support, to a more hosted type system, where there are, you know, kind of substantial $30,000 to $40,000 recurring license fees for all of, for the phones that we need throughout the district. Keep in mind that this is not a situation where we can just rely upon cellphones. Each classroom has to have a dedicated 911-type phone in it. So again, not like a lot of other commercial applications, where you can use voice-over IP for your phones. Steve is exploring different type of applications, but more to follow on that one, but that's a pretty high-order one. We did replace one of the concrete stairs here at Gostown High School due to deterioration. There is one more that probably is more of an imminent need. The other one can probably, we can hold off. And then the other one is the locker room flooring, the epoxy flooring at Mountain View. Again, 30-some-odd years old, it's in pretty horrible shape. No decisions are needed, but Jared, I know one thing that I wanted to do was, I wanted to go over this with the Budget Committee. The one thing that we heard, whether it's true or perception, and that is more transparency, more discussion about the capital reserve fund, what the school board is looking to do, so I want to, you know, something that I plan on going to the next Budget Committee Meeting, and at least letting them know, these are some of the projects that we are entertaining.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, one of the things that I would recommend is, let's change it to a Randy priority list.
Yes.
I think that that would definitely...
That's fair.
That is one thing that they always look at, is, okay, why is this a higher priority than the others?
Right.
If we can kind of articulate it exactly right now.
Yeah, and I'll redo this, and then try to refresh the numbers a little bit too, because when we do this, it was typically during CIP, and numbers do change, so, but I just, I think the more that we discuss these things, the more they end up in the minutes on GTV. We are being transparent, we are talking about them, we are using these funds in a prudent way to try to balance out our capital needs with, you know, making sure everything is safe and in good shape. And some of these, Jared, as well as, I took a lot of pictures of this locker room, I think the pictures speak the volumes of why it needs to be done. Pictures to follow.
So Nicole had her hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and this doesn't have to be a tonight item, but when you talk about the stuff to the Budget Committee when it comes back to us, it might be helpful to know some more about the why on these projects. So like Randy did a great job talking about the cistern. The tables are a safety issue, from what I understand, kids sit on them, the seats fall off, it's a safety issue. But when people can understand the why we're asking for something, and the importance of it, like a phone system, why can't we just use a phone you hang on the wall like we used to have at home? So I think people are generally more apt to get behind something when they understand really what the impact is. So just a point of suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you, Nicole. Go ahead, Dan.
Scott, I was going to point out, in terms of the district phone system, I think this one's going to take a little more discussion.
Oh, yeah.
So when we think about the authorized uses of the capital reserve fund, I know that Mr. Borget is considering hosting a couple of different options.
Half of that cannot be, right, so half of that cost is licensing.
I wanted Jared to be aware...
And we cannot use capital reserve.
That there may be pieces of this phone system project that may not be CRF-eligible.
In one of those options, yeah.
And I would just share with the board, the last time we did the phone system, we got a grant. So we, this was a Gary Girallaman got a grant, it didn't cost us a dime kind of thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Randy, you can go home.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you for staying. All right, staffing.
I'm going to ask Mrs. McGrath to come up and join us, if I may, because we're going to start with the staffing sheet and then roll into a couple of other things, so as she makes her way up. So on the staffing sheet for your approval, we have a number of non-renewals. You can see on the right, these were all one-year positions, so this would be for your approval.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher non-renewals as presented.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second? By Ginny. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Go ahead.
So we have teacher nomination. This is a new teacher for next year, hired a middle school eighth grader, oh, this must be, this is to replace Mr. Maraska. I know what this is now. So Jason Banner.
Now, do you need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher nominations for the 24, 25 school year as presented.
Do I have a second? By Caroline. All those in favor say, oh, the one time I didn't ask.
Well, just for curious, it said, see the attached list of current staff. I don't have that.
Is that this one? This one? No, that would, that's different. That's not it, that's different? Yeah.
No. But it's the current staff. We usually got it, and it's hundreds of names, right?
It's a handful of pages, and it's, yes, the current staff.
And we used to get it either in an Excel spreadsheet or something, I don't remember seeing it.
Was it in the packet, Denise? I'm sorry. Do you...
No. No.
So just cross off where it says, see attached list of current staff. If you cross that off, then we're in good shape.
Right, we could, well, we can just say current staff because we're approving the current staff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to continue the current staff, we just don't see the attacheds.
Plus this one.
Right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion for the eighth grade social studies teacher? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, now we're administrators.
Yeah, so the next batch is administrator nominations. We'll discuss compensation in non-public. So it'll be up to the board if you want to move forward with the nominations or if you want to do it after the non-public discussion, that's up to the board.
What do you guys want to do?
We've done it both ways over the years. And I would say same thing on facilities nomination and the supervisor. So all of the remaining ones, we can either do the nominations now or we can have discussions in non-public and do it after.
Is there going to be a problem if we nominate someone, approve them, and something happens otherwise?
Um, no. No, because they're still nominated. We would need to then just go back and work out the compensation piece.
Right.
I don't see an issue with it.
All right, so...
I'll make a motion to accept the nominations as for administrator, facilities, supervisor.
For 24, 25.
Thanks. Jenny, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline, any further discussion? See a none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, co-curricular.
Thank you. And lastly, on the back of the sheet, we have four coaches and, so those are the names. Two are new and one is a transfer. And two are volunteers. So again, every time I see the volunteers, I continue to say, thank you to the many, many dedicated, incredible coaches who give their time to our community.
Yeah, absolutely.
And to know, Brian, the taxpayers should know how many free hours the people give in the community volunteering.
Thousands, thousands of hours.
And the amount of money that they save because people come in and do volunteer.
Right. All right, I'll need a motion for this.
Motion to approve the co-curricular sports nominations for 23, 24 as presented.
Twenty, so that says 23, 24, that's a typo.
24, 25. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jenny. Any further discussion? See a none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so now we have...
Yeah, so we're going to continue, and Mrs. McGrath had another handout. So if you look at the one that says April 1st, staffing approvals on the top, that's what we're going to focus on now. So the first part is the Maple Avenue hiring process. So this would be the hiring of a principal to replace Mrs. Pishka. What I am recommending to the board is an internal search process. I think we have a number of very strong candidates likely within our current staff. The timeline that is identified, I'll let Mrs. McGrath go over in just a second here, but you'll see this gray line. If we are unsuccessful in finding an internal candidate, we would then look externally. So it's kind of a two-part process. First part, internal only, second part, external. Okay?
Great, thank you, Brian. So the upper half above the gray line outlines that we're seeking approval of this plan this evening by the board. We've already had a couple of the parts that are moving occur as communications with both Bartlett and Maple happened last week to announce that Mrs. Pishka is moving to Bartlett and therefore the vacancy at Maple. So if this plan is approved, we would plan to post the position internal only, as Brian just described, for the Maple Ave principal tomorrow. And we would then seek to do interviews of those candidates who are qualified on April 12th. We would be looking for our committee to include our assistant superintendent Wendy. We'd look for two members of the board to volunteer for the committee. We would be including both Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Ryu. We would ask for two teacher volunteers and two support staff employees and up to three members of the Maple PFT group as parent representatives. So those individuals would do interviews on April 12th and then make their recommendation for a candidate to the superintendent, who would do his interview on Monday, the 15th, and bring forward the nomination to the board if there is a successful candidate that evening. So pretty quick, given the fact that in the event we don't have an internal candidate, that we need to get moving with the external process. So on April 15th, if we were unable to identify an internal candidate at that point, we would get the position posted externally. That same committee would continue the external process. And then you can see the following timelines for first round interviews, May 1st, if second rounds are needed, May 7th, final interviews with the superintendent, May 13th, and nomination to the board, May 20th.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Do you want board members to volunteer right now?
That'd be great.
So Jared and who?
Oh, to volunteer for the committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, the 12th, so I can do it.
Oh. Yeah, they can be dear on the day.
Well...
Right. It's on the 12th.
Yes. Uh, I could, yes, that's fine.
If you can't, let Kate know, surely we can find someone else. So is that okay? Okay.
So if you are in agreement with that process, Kate did draft a motion to approve the process, if you're so inclined.
Am I missing it?
It's on the back, that's first page.
It looks like that.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page. All right, so do we have a motion from someone?
A motion to approve the process just explained by Kate McGrath.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second? By Jenny, any further discussion? See a none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous with that one. And now we have another one.
Okay, so the next piece is, we are requesting before the board this evening, the creation of a new elementary assistant principal position. So let's talk a little bit about this. In July of 2018, we created a split administrative position between Bartlett and Glen Lake, primarily focused on oversight of special education as a special education facilitator. This position has been successful since 2018, but every year since then, the building principals have asked to make the positions full-time in each of their respective schools. That is a request that I have never approved until now. And I'd like to offer a few thoughts on that. So the first piece is, the current staffing model allows for assistant principal coverage at Glen Lake School three days a week and at Bartlett, two days a week. Last week, I had the pleasure of spending the day at Bartlett because I was covering the school because we didn't have any coverage. And that happens fairly often. I've done that a number of times. Mrs. Kohler's done that a number of times because we don't have two full-time administrators and there are things that happen and sometimes people are out of the buildings. So over the last five years, we've seen an increase in the number of students requiring significant behavioral interventions and ongoing supports. This trend requires our administrators to spend more time each day supporting these students. And I would share with the board, it's also supporting those teachers. So when we have a student with significant dysregulation who is causing behavioral issues, in addition to dealing with that student right then and there, the teacher needs support. And that sometimes has been difficult because we don't have that full-time capacity. We're also seeing a trend that compromises our ability to hire and retain certified staff who are well-trained for their professional responsibilities. In the past two years, we've had to seek what's called permission to employ from the New Hampshire Education Department to employ teachers whom are otherwise, don't have credentials to teach. Last year, we sought permission for three individuals and this year, it's up to five. So these staff require more support from administrators to be successful in the classroom. The ability to hire certified teachers for their current roles will continue to be a challenge and we need to make sure our current model of support is adequate. We are also forecasting the need to replace multiple leadership positions in the coming years. Our focus on succession planning to fill these critical leadership roles and to support new administrators remains a top priority. As I've shared with the board, we've had incredible stability. We've had a significant lack of turnover in our administrators, which is a really good thing. But the bad thing is, that sometimes means that they're all very experienced and might be kind of getting close to retirement at around the same time. So as we continue to do our best to anticipate our succession planning needs, we'd like to create this new position and have coverage in both levels, in both schools, at Bartlett and at Glen Lake. And here's the piece that's new for me. When we think about our ability to support administrators, this includes principals. So as we start to see, we're talking about a new principal at Maple Ave, there will be other schools in the coming years where we will have new principals. We need to make sure that I have time and Mrs. Kohler has time to support said administrators. And part of the creation, if the board is in concurrence, would be to have a number of district-level projects overseen by these assistant principals. And you'll see on the bottom of Kate's memo, our list of some of the projects that right now, Mrs. Kohler has sole oversight of these projects. The ability to have another administrator to assign some of these tasks frees her up to have more ongoing support and coaching sessions with teachers. So a brief list of those would include the Vector, which is a new platform we're moving forward with next year, professional management. It's a training product, it's a platform. Title I Coordinator, which includes budgeting, activity writing, hiring, parent surveys, all kinds of compliance requirements. Grant stakeholders, team member for Title I, Title II, Title IV. District Library Media Administrator Liaison, attend monthly curriculum coordinator meetings as the elementary representative. And you can see, the list goes on and on. So what we're asking for is the creation of a second assistant principal, which will be to full-time support both Bartlett and Glen Lake. How are we going to pay for it, Brian? Kate?
Sure, so what we are proposing is, Brian was just speaking to reducing class sizes at Bartlett by one full-time teacher. So we would propose that the position is a 220-day contract, just like our current assistant principal, that is split between the two buildings, at a salary of $90,000. You can see just above the box, that salary is lower than what our elementary benchmark is at $98,000. But to make this cost-neutral using the one full-time teaching position and a half-time vacant position, this proposal with a salary of $90,000 would just be $430 over our budgeted lines.
Go ahead, Jared.
I think I misheard you. Did you say that we're going to be losing a teacher next year?
Yeah. So what we're looking at for next year is, we have the ability to go down one section at Bartlett based on enrollment and still have, still have very small class sizes. So that would allow us to take a vacant teacher position and roll it into the costing for this.
Go ahead, Kate. So Jenny, go ahead.
I think it's a good idea. It's something that I've like been for, for many, many years.
You've been talking about this since before 2018.
Yes. I think it's a liability not to have two administrators in a building. Things go on, having worked in schools and a lot of special ed, things go on in schools and one administrator can't deal with things that go on in schools now. And I think it's not safe. I think you need two backups. I don't think it's safe for not to have a person in and then to have a new person in because then everyone is stressed that day. All of a sudden, you have this superintendent in your school being the principal. It's just, if we want good support in our schools and we want our schools to be safe, then we need to staff them with the right people and we need administrators in our schools. And I've been saying that forever and I think this is the right thing to do. I...
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else before we need a motion, which, go ahead, Jared?
Only because it's mentioned, I know it's somewhat mutually exclusive. One of the main selling points that we had for our GA contract was we're going to be able to hire and retain teachers, but according to the statement, we're not able to do that because we're continuing to have to reach out to get waivers for professionals that don't have the certifications. Something to think about as we move forward with future contracts, because again, that was a major selling point that we used to pass that or have that passed by our...
Yeah, I don't disagree, Jared, and I think it only highlights the need for our contracts to be really competitive because right now, every school district is fighting for the same positions. So let's say a school psychologist or a physics teacher, everybody's trying to hire that same position. So I think Jared's exactly right. As we think about future contracts, we need to stay very competitive. No doubt. No doubt.
Does somebody want to read the motion?
I'll do the motion unless Jenny, you want the honor since you were there.
I know, Jenny, do you have it? It's written like that at the bottom in the light gray.
I am making a motion to create a second assistant principal, elementary role utilizing 1.5 teacher vacancies in the year 2025 budget. This position would then continue moving forward in future budget years.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline?
Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion? See a none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Thank you.
You.
And our last request this evening, Kate, do you want to go over this one?
I would be happy to. So...
This is the memo that's from Mrs. Freitas.
Thank you so much. What we have included in the packet as the last item is a proposal to repurpose our current board-certified behavior analyst position to a behavioral intervention facilitator position. So over the last three years, we have been unsuccessful in filling the BCBA role. It has been filled by a contracted services provider and the needs for our behavior programs just continues to grow. So Mrs. Freitas has outlined numerous elements as to why this position would be needed and necessary and why it's also needed to elevate it into a supervisory role. As we think about the needs of our students and specifically those children who have behavior needs, we are looking at a program that expands beyond the BCBA approach, which is a very specific style and approach to behavior needs and to have a more comprehensive, holistic approach with different styles for different student needs. So instead of just trying to fill the BCBA role, the behavior facilitator would serve in the capacity of the BCBA role, but also work to integrate different styles and approaches to behavior across the district. The facilitator would also work closely with the director of special ed to create programs at the building level to make sure that we're fully wrapped around those student behavior needs as they continue to change and escalate on an annual basis. In addition to our ability to not hire a position for the BCBA, because we have not had a staff member, we've been unable to bill for BCBA services through Medicaid. So in addition to creating this facilitator position as our employee, we'll now be able to get an estimated $10,000 to $40,000 in revenues that we'll be able to bill for services that are, will continue to happen, but we've been unable to bill for because we haven't had the internal employee on staff to do so. So we are looking to repurpose this BCBA position into the behavior intervention facilitator. I know that Brian also handed out during the correspondence folder, the article relative to independent contractors versus employees, and that was another consideration that was a high priority as part of this recommendation to make this position change. So this was part of the budget. We were over-expending the BCBA line every year because we're using contracted services and the shift back to the salary line would be a slight savings over what we're paying in contracted services, plus the possibility of the... of the revenue that we would receive for being able to bill. Anything I left out?
That's it.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Dan.
The only thing I wanted to do is a little math. Even though the budget for the personnel is 92,973, the expected budget would be 154,219 for an increase of 61,246. The actual cash flow has been 164,40.
Correct.
And so if we look at that, we actually have a delta of less than 6,221 less, and then an additional perhaps $40,000, so we could actually be spending $45,000 less.
That is accurate.
By moving the new, getting into the new position.
With higher level services.
Correct.
Yeah. Full-time, enabled to do all the fun stuff that we. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Caroline.
I think that this is just such a win-win for the community and for the students because, like you had mentioned, this has been such a hard position to hire, not just for us, but across the board. The private sector has had a hard time hiring individuals for this. Students really lose out. Parents can't find private individuals to take on this need for their kids at home. So the fact that we might be able to be offering it during the school day to kids, the school community will highly benefit from this, the students in the classroom and the teachers as well, along with a lot of cost savings in the long run. So I think that this is amazing.
Thank you. Thank you, Caroline. All right, there's a motion on the bottom here. Someone want to make that?
I'll do it.
Okay.
A motion to approve the repurposing of a one FT BCBA to one FT behavioral intervention facilitator and the draft job description as presented effective July 1st of 2024.
Do I have a second? By Jack. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous. All right, so is that it with staffing for now?
That's it for staffing, for now.
For now. All right, any business that may legally come before the meeting? Go ahead, Jenny.
I'm really concerned about the new education standards. I recently saw the new changes, and there's an awful lot of may to different standards that used to be in the, in the education standards. Not shall or will, but may if you feel like it. That really concerns me, that it's very open standards, like you can educate kids if you feel like it, and if you don't, that's okay. Is there anything that we can do that would be really helpful as a board to go forward, to make a statement or to do anything that would be helpful other than, you know, we can all sign a letter, sign a petition or anything, but is there anything that we can do really helpful? Because this scares me for our kids, that this would be the standard of education going forward.
Couple of options. So the first option is come with me on Wednesday afternoon, and any interested board members can give public comment to the state board. There's also about a month, I believe it is, that anyone can provide written input. If they send, I believe it goes to Angela Adams at the New Hampshire Education Department. So anyone as individuals, or if the board would like to direct administration on your behalf, we'd be happy to do that. But those would really be your options. So the process for approving rules, the state board opens rulemaking, there are timelines and procedures that go with that. After the proposal is agreed on by the state board, it then goes on to the Joint Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, which then has to approve it. So it's a kind of a multi-step process. But we can provide public comment.
Because I think I would like people in Goffstown to realize that there are going to be really big changes to education if this happens, and things that they're expecting their children to get in their education don't have to happen.
Yeah. And I would say.
According to the education standards.
Something going from being a requirement where right now, it says the school district shall provide or will provide, to the school district may provide, you know, what does that do? That potentially does nothing. So at the local level, if we say these things are still important, we're going to continue to do them. However, if it says may instead of shall, when it comes to the requirements and the potential cost implication of said, I think that's the part that we have to be aware of. That's the part. And a perfect example of this is, I think the board is aware that I serve on the Holocaust and Genocide Education Commission. We worked with as a commission, we developed draft rules just two years ago that went to the state board. The state board opened the rulemaking, we went through the process, it got approved by Jalkar. We just did it, they just went into effect. In fact, this last year was the first year that the New Hampshire Education Department required administrators to share what we're doing and to comment whether we're meeting the standards of the Holocaust and genocide pieces, and those are being changed. So that's the part that I can't connect. I sat at that table with the state board, we proposed draft language, the state board adopts it, and now, a year and a half or two years later, we're changing it all again. I don't understand why. So, and I'm just looking at that one narrow section of the rules, and obviously, this applies to the whole swath of the ED 306s. But I don't understand, because I worked on the standards. We sat with the state board, and they adopted them, and now they're proposing reducing those standards. That I don't understand. But I'll be asking for clarification on Wednesday.
And when this whole process was started and pretty much finished, there wasn't even a teacher on board that was a working teacher. So it was all done by somebody, you know, these people that.
Well, originally, it was Mr. Vermont who came here to Goffstown and did the presentation. That was who the state board hired to facilitate this process. So, you know, we were very invested in all of that, but I think your concern is well-founded.
So I saw Nicole's hand up.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. If there's a way to share the information about when and where on Wednesday for anybody that maybe from the public wants to go, I think that might be helpful.
I believe it's Wednesday afternoon at the Department of Education in Concord, which is 25.
Hall Street. Hall Street.
Hall Street.
One o'clock.
And it's between 1:00 and 4:30.
Okay, and then if we have the email address of the woman that's taking feedback as well, that'd be great.
Angela Adams. Her information is on the department's website, and if anyone needed to find it, it's pretty easy.
I'm sending an update. We got it from the school boards, I'll send it to you.
And then, from my perspective, I'll have to hear from the rest of the board, but I'd be happy for you to write a letter on the board's behalf with your thoughts on how this is going.
Go ahead, Brenna.
We all got an email today that has the email address, and it's actually Julie Arshay at the Department of Ed, but it's all in our, if you check her inbox, you'll have all the details.
Yeah, we get stuff all the time. Jack, you should be getting that. Let Denise know if you don't, because you should be getting all the updates from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. All right, is there anything else? We do have a bunch of non-public tonight.
Do we need a motion for the letter? Is anyone else interested in that?